Okay, well, welcome everybody. Yeah, we're being three o'clock. I'll call this regular meeting of town council to order this thirteenth day of September two thousand and twenty one. We have an agenda before us. Are there any additions or deletions?
Yes, your worship, under four point one delegation, public art policy, they like to reschedule. We will not be joining council today. With also the addition of nine point one council reports, request from Council Hill for committee's reappointment.
Okay, that is for, say again.
Nine point one.
Yes.
Request for committee reappointment.
Okay.
Council heels reports.
Okay. And yet, anything else? Now would someone like to move? We adopt the agenda as amended.
Your worship, I'll move that we adopt the agenda as amended.
Thank you, counselor. All favor the motion. Carrie, thank you. First thing on the agenda, the minutes of the regular council meeting of August twenty third for consideration with someone like to move, we adopt those minutes that submitted.
Your worship, I would move the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Hill. There any errors or emissions to be noted in those minutes? All in favor of the motion carried. Next item is the minutes of the agenda and priorities meeting of September seventh for consideration. Would someone like to move? We adopt those minutes as submitted.
Also move your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Barkley. Any errors or emissions? No. Not all in favor of the motion. Carrie, thank you. And next to the minutes of the special council meeting of September seventh for consideration with someone make the movie dot those minutes as submitted.
I would so move your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Harrison. Any error or submissions? All in favor of the motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to delegations, we have H C M A architects regarding multiplex.
I'll take that on your worship. And then I'll pass it over to Megan. He is back in, I think, the first quarter twenty eighteen or council passed your strategic plan. And you identified recreation amenities and social gathering spaces as a priority. It wasn't until a little bit later in your term, probably halfway through around May of two thousand and twenty, where council give direction to do an RFP, request for proposal for consulting services for aquatic center modernization and pre-designed plan. Obviously, from that initial scope, we counsel ultimately, as we step through the process, council identified that, hey, we were looking a little bit short. Let's look at just the well-being of the aquatic center, but let's look at a bigger picture of a recreational community center. So today, we would like to present to you that pre-designed report to you. You've had glimpses of this information within your strategic planning meetings for quite some time. Ideally, we would recommend that council consider adopting this report, which makes it a working document for 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 next council for consideration based on your comfort to do that. So I'd like to put that on for to Megan and then on to Michael, the H C M A. So Megan.
Okay, so again, not a lot to add from from what Todd has said, but this report is the result of a process that highlights the challenges and the complexities of making this type of decision. Again, the age and condition of the aquatic center prompted the investigation into a renovation expansion or replacement of the pool that did lead into a more comprehensive conversation on other facilities and desired amenities. In the end, we are left with a lot more knowledge and understanding to support the decision that needs to be made. The process with H C M A is forced an examination of service levels, community expectations, and the town's financial realities. So this report will provide context and clarity for incoming council to lead the town in the responsible renewable renewal of our facilities. So yeah, I will turn it over to to Michael to to walk us through. He probably won't get us through the entire four hundred and twenty pages of the report, but we'll hit the hit the high points for council. So I'll give it to you, Michael.
Thank you, Todd and Megan, and good afternoon, your worship and members of council. Thanks for having H C M A back in one of your regular sessions. Megan is correct. I will not take you through four hundred pages. I, in the past, I know I've given some long presentations. I'm going to try to make this one a bit brief and to the point to allow a bit more time for questions and answers, because I know that this isn't. It it's not necessarily a linear process with what we've done. It's in many aspects is probably unveiled more questions. So I think the question and answer period is really important here. Before I share my screen and start, can everyone hear me okay or? I see I see some heads nodding.
Sorry.
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, everything seems to be fine, Michael.
Perfect. Okay, I will share my screen and oh, it does say the host has disabled participant screen sharing.
Try again there now.
There we go. And I'll go full screen. And so Todd and Megan, I did say that I wasn't going to show any images from the previous studies. But when I was assembling the slide deck, it really seemed to make sense just to have a few images in. This project has been occurring over a significant period of time, and I thought it'd be good just to refresh everyone's memory. So jumping right in, as Todd had explained in his intro, this project started by looking at your aquatic center and the original RFP asked us to look into a renovation, an addition, or a new build on the same site. The renovation was really looking at what can we do within the existing walls? The addition looked at adding a modest increase of area to the east side of the building, and then the new build was creating a brand new building with comparable services just so that they could be compared apples to apples in a in a cost analysis. As Todd mentioned, that led to council asking for an additional study that in terms of long-term strategic planning, it could be a benefit to the town to consider consolidating the aquatic program with with additional program at the twin arena site with the introduction of a multiplex and recreation center. And so H C M A moved to the twin arena site, and we've presented to this to you in the past. I'm not going to dwell on it, but it was a large field house with both hardcore and soft court, artificial turf, a renewed curling rink and aquatic center, a brand new aquatic center, all connected to the twin arena with a new front entrance for the building. Part of the rationale on how to make this feasible, there was a notion of construction sequencing, construction phasing that would have the field house and some community programs as a phase one with the curling center aquatics and the revised renewed front door of the building following in phase two. And although there was some excellent value and ideas brought forth in this, some of the shortcomings were one in phase one, you're not getting a renewed aquatic center, and that is that is indicates the biggest need in the community at the moment. Two, it was requiring a lot of alterations and changes to the twin arena building. By doing this, you open up the building to be to have to meet current code, building code requirements, which can have a substantial cost to the project just by having to upgrade structure and and all sorts of building code requirements on the twin arena building. And and the construction cost, there was a lot of building here. There was a lot of area and when we went to look at the cost estimate that was provided by B T Y cost consultants for the first three options, we were looking at a construction budget of under five million for the renovation, seven point seven for the addition to the aquatic center, fourteen million for the new build, but then this multiplex at the twin arena site was jumping up to sixty five million and you know, a very substantial price tag. So as you know, we were instructed to reevaluate the multiplex idea to find ways to bring it closer to a construction cost of twenty five million dollars. And that's really, I just wanted to give that as a as a refresher. I know everyone's been showing this information before, but I thought it'd be useful to see that. So this programming phase of looking to determine the size and feel of a multiplex of twenty five million, there was a couple items that the consultant team first thought would be best to discuss with council and with administration at the town of Innisville. One of them was project budget versus construction budget. And and we had a session, a Zoom session, just to kind of outline the differences. We often differentiate them as hard costs and soft costs. Hard costs are the cost of physically constructing your building, that the materials, labor, and land. Where soft costs are everything else, professional fees, permits, project administration costs. And we noticed in when we were presenting the multiplex that there was a few comments made, and we really wanted to make sure that everyone was on the same page for overall costs compared to construction costs, just so that there wasn't misalignment in expectations. So that was one workshop that was conducted in this programming phase. Another one was sustainability. And Rebecca Holt from H C M A's Vancouver office gave a very detailed presentation, and I know there was a lot of information in it. I'm not going to go through it all now, but the the kind of main takeaway from my perspective is you really want to set goals for sustainability as early as possible in a project. The longer it's, the longer a client waits to set those goals, the more expensive they have or the greater implications they have on project budget. And there is lots of data out there showing that they can often be incorporated at kind of neutral cost if done in the beginning of the project. Some of the accessibility, or some of the sustainability rating systems that Rebecca mentioned that could be applicable to the town Innisville for this project was the Rick Hansen Foundation, which is a certification system for inclusive design and accessibility. Lead, which I know the town of Innisville is already familiar with, the leadership in energy and environmental design and zero carbon building. And her point for zero carbon building is that as we see carbon becoming something that's taxed and has a cost associated with it, it is going to affect annual operational costs, and the more that that can be addressed in design phases, the bigger impact in savings a building can have over the years. And and with, as we mentioned, with any of the sustainability items, H C M A is more than happy to help with any further questions or discussions on this topic. Then then I think what we wanted to talk about was the workshops, this stakeholder. It would really beneficial in this space. Prior to letting out the footprint and that reduces multiplex. Some part.
Michael, Michael, we seem to having an audio issue. There.
Oh.
There, try that.
How about now? Can you hear me better there?
I think so. Yeah.
I'm gonna try. Just stop sharing to see that solves it. Is there anybody here now?
Yeah, I think so.
I'm getting a bit of a my end, to be honest, my view, I might turn my
Michael, it's still breaking.
Audio is.
Sorry, Michael, it's still breaking up badly here.
Okay. I might need to. That might be the best. Okay, I'll.
Are you there, Michael? Still got the audio, but breakup. Yeah. Michael, if are you there? He's gone now. I think we can probably, you know, try and reschedule.
Megan, if you could contact him and put him down a little bit later on the agenda, perhaps.
Yeah.
So I suggest maybe four o'clock.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, we'll we'll do that. We'll try again at something like four o'clock or whatever, after you get in touch with them. Okay, let's move on then to the CEO's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, your worship. A few items to go through verbally, so I didn't get a report into your your pack. Just what, first of all, the policing and safe communities committee council had to express some interest to meet collectively with that committee. That committee is going to be meeting on September twenty ninth, five o'clock, likely at the LLC. Once the agenda is confirmed, we'll forward it to council as well. So hopefully it does fit within your within your calendars. Again, please and safe communities committee joint meeting with council September twenty ninth. And again, that poses concern with you, please, please let myself know, and I'll we'll see what we can do.
Okay.
Okay, so a few other items, Mr. Mayor. I attended a virtual meeting between A U M A Safe and Healthy Communities Committee and this A U M A Small Towns Committee with with the municipal fair staff regarding funding of libraries. There has been a stakeholder engagement with from municipal fairs since twenty nineteen as follows suit to an A U M A resolution. The resolution that was approved by by members of A U M A was asking municipal fairs to update data in calculating provincial operating grants. The ministry currently uses a twenty sixteen population data. So you you might have heard of this a little bit. But where A U M A stands right now is to have municipal affairs maintain the twenty sixteen population numbers due to the in migration within the province from smaller communities to larger centers where the smaller centers will be receiving less less dollars to operate their their libraries, whereas the bigger centers would be then accumulating those dollars. The challenge is that the province currently funds libraries within in Alberta, thirty point five million dollars to grants to municipalities. So I just want to bring that to your attention. You'll hear that now and into the near future. And then also, I know, I think it's council rebringer mentioned a while ago, perhaps that also population of communities, ten thousand or more, will require a master's librarian, which means a librarian within communities for the population of ten thousand or more would require the librarian to have a master's degree. Also, the we hosted, the town hosted a candidates information session last Thursday is the second session that we hosted through Ian McCormick of Strategic Steps, and in total of the two engagements, I'd say up close to thirty participants, twenty eight to thirty, which is well attended, really good sessions, and I believe those that attended received a quick and dirty what life life would be as an elected official. I attended a A U M A Safe and Healthy Communities Committee meeting on September tenth in Edmonton. Here's our final committee meeting of the the last year. And right now, the committees are finalizing their priorities as recommended to their board. And those include continuing on with justice and policing as a priority, also advocating for improvements to the provincial mental health and addiction system, which is certainly rapid now in our communities, advocating for improvements to the provincial affordable housing system, as well as the EMS first responder, which will be part of the agenda. We'll talk about locally what is occurring at that joint meeting with the police and safe communities committee. Few events I attended was included the Community Partners in Action presentation and awards ceremony, the rodeo parade, and of course, the rotary golf tournament, which occurred last week. There was a question posed to me regarding council meetings and AMP meetings from now on to rescue your term. We we connected this morning as the senior leadership team to forecast upcoming requests for decisions or information items council needs to be made aware of. And right now, there are action items identified right up to the twelfth of October that will require some involvement of council and your formal direction for consideration. We anticipate those agendas be quite light, but there's some things we need from you within your term. There's potential at looking at canceling the AMP of October the fifth, but we'll certainly maybe look at that over the next couple of weeks as well. I think that there's any questions to my to my report or anything else, be happy to answer your questions.
We want to discuss council meetings in in the proximity of the election, our election on the eighteenth. Obviously, we wouldn't be conducting a council meeting on Monday, the eighteenth, but or change anyways. It's my thought at least anyways, is that for sure, there'd be no council meeting on the eighteenth October.
Correct.
But do you you want to continue with one on the eleventh as well?
What's maybe just on to the S L T and just kind of comb through the the rest of dates and just kind of maybe have this conversation with council if you like. So September twentieth, just wondering, I know we had one item, S L T, potentially could we move that to a regular council meeting of the twenty seventh? With that creating issues? Or is it delegation? Okay, so we'll try to consolidate as much as we can to kind of tighten things up.
Yeah.
I think that's probably your maybe your hopes perhaps, but for sure will require a a motion of the eighteenth, I believe, to cancel that meeting. We'll come back to you at the next regular council meeting with that request for decision. If council doesn't mind, we'll maintain the twentieth. We'll confirm if the delegation. And I'll just give you a kind of a idea what it is. It's regarding the our facilities and investment for for energy savings, renewable energies, and it's quite important, some documents and something for council to consider and move on likely to new council, but we do have a delegation scheduled right now to present that quite detailed report.
All right. Well, that's fine for now. And are there any other questions of the C E O's report? Okay, then I would I would accept a motion to accept his report.
I so move your worship.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Harrison. All in favor of the motion carried? Then the control action or council action control document there that you have, is there anything you'd like to discuss on that? No. Okay, well, would someone like to move? We accept this for information.
I'll move that, your worship.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Bates. All in favor of the motion carried? Right. Operation Services, we have an R F D regarding waste collection contract.
I think Michael's back on from H C M A if we wanted to see if he's if he's working any better.
I am Megan. I apologize about that before. It sounds like my audio is working better now, but can everyone hear me okay?
Sure. I think we can go ahead. Is that fine with everyone?
Okay, I what I'll do is I'll keep my video off. Hopefully, it doesn't happen again. Megan, I do have my phone in front of me. If if my audio is gets really bad, you can just send me an email or text me and I'll but hopefully, hopefully, we don't have any more problems.
Good.
Okay, well, I'll go back to the presentation. I was, I don't know at what point my audio started to fail. But after the sustainability workshop, we really dove into the stakeholders workshops and the goal of the stakeholder workshops was to speak directly to different targeted groups within Innisville on the themes of wellness, on the themes of the field house, aquatics, and curling to really best understand. And curling to really best understand what the multiplex needs to be. To really find an efficient layout and an efficient program. So the first workshop we had was wellness and often when we say wellness, we're talking about. A lot of the non recreation programming, that's the the multipurpose rooms, the informal seating, the cafe. All of the areas outside of the formal recreation programming that allow. The building and site to be a destination for community and and just an inclusive amenity. And we heard a lot of support for the project and especially the the framework of. It being Center for Wellness. And the feedback really reaffirmed the multipurpose rooms and. And as well as exterior programming for the nicer summer months of the year in how. Exterior programming could support and complement. Some of the community programming that already exists within Innisville. The next work that we had was aquatics, there wasn't a lot of the aquatics themes. Had already been discussed in the first stages of the project when we were analyzing the existing aquatic center. It's important to note though that there were some useful comments made about items such as the lap pool. In that previously, it was assumed through the renovation or addition that the existing lap pool would remain as is. And if it is a new build, everything is open. To be determined and. You know, there was some comments made on how if the lap pool was eight lanes instead of six, it opens up more opportunities. If the depth of the lap pool increases. That there could be a greater number of events or competition swim meets held at the center. But in general, most of the items had already been addressed in the earlier phases of the project. The fieldhouse workshop was very instrumental in that currently town of Innisville does not have. A soft court or artificial turf indoor field, so there was a lot of creative commentary. On how a soft court turf field could add a lot of value. And eliminate the need in some instances to have to drive to neighboring communities to to for games and and practice. And that it could be a business draw for other neighboring areas to be able to. Come and and rent the this facility if it was built. And then the curling workshop, this was probably the most eye opening one in that. When we did meet with the Curling Association as well as the, sorry, let me just look at my notes. The shuffleboard association. Although both groups expressed interest in a renewed facility, really when we asked them specifically whether. A renewed building is required, they both said no, and that the existing building really is meeting and serving their needs. And and they feel has a lot of life left in it. And and so this was quite instrumental because from council's previous mandate, we really were looking for efficiencies. In how we could bring down that budget and to hear specifically from the stakeholders and the users of the curling. Building that a new facility is not required, we really saw this and we discussed it with administration. But we really saw this as a step that does not need to occur in this revised and reduced multiplex. And that we should really plan around keeping and maintaining the curling center. So we took the information from those four workshops. And and to revisit the multiplex design that we had provided previously. And and with our main goal of really providing the same. Function and programming that we had previously minus the curling center. But really looking at how efficient can we be spatially so that we can reduce the construction cost. And and the report goes into a lot more detail for the presentation, really just jumping straight into the site plan. So here you're looking at the, if you can see my mouse, it's the twin arena. On the bottom left in gray curling center on the bottom right forty second street running east west on the bottom. And then we're showing in this pink zone, the footprint of the new multiplex. And our rationale for placing it here was, one, we wanted to maintain the curling center. And 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 knowing that it's serving the needs of its users and also that's a cost savings to the project. Two, for the purposes of discussion for this phase, we did place it a bit further north on the site. We saw opportunities around the curling center, sorry, around the new multiplex for some outdoor programming. We know that the Greater Park here is is well used and and especially the baseball diamonds. Are are very active, but we also wanted to explore the idea of some smaller areas that could be. Programmed to to link these buildings together in the absence of them not being physically linked. That being said, if a scheme like this one were to move forward, this building could definitely be located. Further south to be closer to the other existing buildings. Other key elements in this site plan was similar to the previous multiplex is the addition of parking here. To serve the new center but also to serve the park, we were showing. The possibility of relocating the playground and a potential to have a spray park just for ways to activate the park as well. The main building entrances are shown in the pink triangles here from the west and from the the south edge. And we do see that this could be the dash lines here being covered walkways connecting all of these. So that in the absence of a of a heated indoor connection, there could be a covered walkway. To give people a better access route in in the winter months or on a day with heavy rain. Moving in on the main floor plan, so this is a two story building we've proposed and it's. You can just see there's a lot less cord or there's a lot less circulation, we really did work hard at trying to find as an efficient. If a print is possible, it's it's there's a lot of rooms here, but the the simple explanation is to the north. You have your aquatic center and you have your change rooms, the gender neutral universal change rooms. And then the male and female, so that's the north block, the south block is the fieldhouse. And so we're showing the fieldhouse being sized for one indoor soccer field, but. I have a slide following that will show all the different options, there's eight team rooms for here and four over here. That could be configured in many different ways, some of them can be gendered change rooms. They could all be team rooms, even we were playing with the idea that two of them could be accessed from the exterior. To support the baseball diamond activity, when the facilities closed, there could still be change room and washroom access. To the west of the building is really your your community hub where you have your entrances, a cafe. Multipurpose rooms, number three is multipurpose rooms, the one here we saw as playing double duty. And that it could be a dedicated community multipurpose room, it could also be a teaching room. For the aquatic center for their classes and so forth, it could be fully glazed and open on. These two mid sized multipurpose rooms are shown with the dash line, there was a strong need in the engagement. For a large one hundred person multipurpose room and we sometimes see those larger rooms. Getting built but then not used that often because generally smaller room needs are more frequent than the large ones. So we did think it would probably be just better use of space to show two medium sized ones that could be when needed turned into a large room. And then we're showing a hint at some of the outdoor programming, but again, I I think the focus right now is more on. On on the main floor interior programming, there's a central staircase and elevator here. To take you up to the second floor where we do have our fitness and exercise room. We have some staff offices and we're also showing fitness exercise area around the running track. Just to provide a whole range of options for classes and activities and 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 using different types of machines. The overall area of this multiplex, this reduced one is about half the area. Of the one that we had shown you previously. In the report, we have a bunch of different kind of precedent images that show some of these ideas. I I think the report does a better job of explaining some of the. The the feeling and and the atmosphere for some of these spaces, but I just wanted to include them in here just. In the event that you haven't read the report yet, it would be it's a really useful section to get an understanding. Like for example, when we show the fitness machine and equipment up here, you know, we see it as a way to really activate. The entire building just to see people exercising and and active in this community building. This this was included in the report just to show all the different options for activity and sports in a turf. Indoor field, there would be more, but we really just wanted to get give the town an understanding, the flexibility. And really, this is all just sports, but there's other types of activities and community events that we could see. This fieldhouse supporting. And of course, with this, we had B T Y provided an updated cost estimate and. It this cost estimate was produced in the thick of some of the global supply chain. Issue shortages we were seeing. Earlier this year in COVID, we're still seeing some of them, things like wood have come down in price to more reasonable level. But we're still seeing steel and and other items being very expensive. So this second line here that says construction cost, that's coming up to almost thirty four million dollars. They they were indicating that this is a easy ten, if not more percent higher than what they would normally see. And that this would probably be more in the range of twenty seven million in pre COVID numbers. Now, that doesn't mean that much because a lot of these numbers will never go back down to where they were before. But I I did want to use it as a rationale for why this turned out to be larger than what we had anticipated. Including the cost consultants, everyone was pretty surprised by this number. With the contingencies that are added to every project and at this point in a project, it's twenty percent. Is used for contingencies and and as we mentioned previously contingencies aren't, it isn't guaranteed they're going to be used. Well, it's always plus or minus, sometimes it's less, but you want, you do want to account for it at this point because there's definitely projects that do use it. And if you don't account for it, your project budget may fall short. So the adding the contingencies brings the overall project budget, the sorry, the the. The construction cost with escalation up to forty one million. Which when we compare it to. The previous four options, so option one, sorry, these aren't labeled is renovation, option two is addition. Option three is the new aquatic center at the existing site, option four was the large multiplex. And then option five is the reduced one, and you know, I'm just noticing the numbers in the previous slide didn't line up. With this one, this is the the correct one, though, the forty one million, we had a few things revised. And and this is the correct number here. But I mentioned that this option five is fifty percent the area, half the area of option four. Yet you're not seeing. A direct correlation with the. Construction costs and and our cost consultant explained that that is typical, you know, you still. Just because you reduce your fieldhouse in half, you still have the essentially a lot of the same mechanical equipment to service that. So even though you're reducing the area by half, you don't see that scene. Transfer into the construction costs, but keep in mind that this construction cost for option five does include some of the higher prices. That we've seen because of COVID. In the report, the next step section, I was reading over it today for this presentation and it does. Give a lot of. Useful steps to take as this project moves into the next step, but what it doesn't really identify is the big decision. That the town of Innisville has is how best to move forward, usually how we want to leave a client in situations like this. Is a clear path on on how they move forward into the next step and what the best solution for them is. And we we understand it's not that clear in this case and that. There's there's, I'm sure from your perspective, some easy pros and cons to all of these options. And that I'm I'm sure there's still quite a bit of internal discussion needed to really understand how best to move this project forward. The last slide I had was really just also illustrating how early this is in the project phase timeline. So the far left bubble here being pre design, that's that's what I would describe what we've gone through. The next phases are the two design phases schematic design, design development. After that is construction documents where you create the drawings that a contractor uses to build it. And then you move into your construction phase and after that occupancy. I'm gonna stop screen sharing now, I I really just wanted to give a high level, I'm gonna try turning my video on. A high level overview of of our findings and and the and the updated floor plans. Really happy to take any questions you might have to to better clarify this.
Any any questions, Castle, comes from Parkley?
Yeah, thank you, your worship through to Michael, so Michael, the the soft costs for this. Latest design approximately.
So it it a lot of it would come in how the town of Innisville structures the project. So one of it is, one of the soft costs would be consultant fees, so it it would depend on how you procure your consultants. Or how you structure the awarding of the work. Another one is project management, so if. If a company that specializes in project management, if they're brought in, that might raise fees a bit. If if the project management is handled internally with the town, then that would probably have reduced fees. The the short of it is, and and this was something that B T Y mentioned, is they they see a range of anywhere from twelve to twenty percent. Of soft costs rep based on the construction estimate, so it does, it does add. A bit, it is a significant amount, but there's no set number on what that percentage is because it varies from project to project.
Thank you, and just one more question, so with respect to the fieldhouse, the surface of the fieldhouse. Is that relevant basically to the size of the arena as far as the the surface goes?
In in terms of like how big is the fieldhouse compared, well, for the for the arena, you have two rings, you have two sheets of ice. So I it it wouldn't be as large as that because we're we're now proposing a single fieldhouse. Whereas the previous version had had two. two fields side by side. And so it would be smaller. I could send through a diagram showing the size of it in comparison to the twin arena, just to easily illustrate the size difference.
Yeah, I guess I'm just questioning the size of the surface compared to the size of the ice surface. Like, would it be 75% of the ice surface size approximately or just ballpark it, it doesn't matter?
Yeah, I would say, I would say, I guess, if, when you combine the two ice sheets, yeah, I would say it might be around the 75%. But I am, I'm just basing that off of the site plan that I'm looking at. I, I would feel better if I just followed it up with a little comparison sketch and sent it through to Todd and Megan.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, your worship. Great report. Thank you, Michael. And I do have one question, though. How difficult would it be if you could put some, excuse me, not actual dates, but number of months or weeks on the Gantt chart that you just showed from pre-designed through schematic occupancy and that, over that, that range? Would that be difficult for, for you to do?
Not at all. Yeah, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't be 100% accurate, but yeah, we did already do that once. We sent it to Todd and Megan. It did make it into the report because at that point when we sent it to them, we were giving them some information if we were to have a start date of, I think it was May of this year or something. But no, those, each phase has typical durations and I can easily add that in and send it through.
I guess, your worship, through to Megan, was this the? I'm just looking at the chart that you sent through before, Michael. Yeah, I think it's more just the month or, or the time that it would take, like, because we don't know when we're going to start. Right? We don't have a date when we're gonna kick off, so it's gonna be hard. But if, if it's four months for schematic, and if you could, I might be able to get it off of here, then if this is still, still accurate.
Well, you know, I have the email a while back, so why don't I find that email? I'll scrub out the dates that had been put to it. And, and just as you've asked, I'll put the general months per phase, and then that way it could be used for any start date.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, Councilor Bates has a question for you.
So when I looked at the, just now, the costs of the other options, have they been updated? It seems like they've gotten a little bigger than what I remembered.
No.
One, two, three. Or obviously didn't change that 66 million.
No, those are the same numbers that, like, I referenced the, I think it was from March of this year, the cost report that we included in that submission. I don't, maybe it's the, these numbers include contingencies. And so maybe the first set of numbers were, were just the construction estimate without a contingency included.
Just, I don't have them, but I thought they were slightly smaller. And if I remember rightly, the the whole Gantt chart was like two to three years is what I vaguely remember.
With, with construction, yes.
Counselor Barkley's question, I think if you compare the size of an indoor soccer field to an arena, it's bigger, like a single sheet.
Yeah, I believe Michael had the slide up there and, and an indoor soccer field, you would fit, fit a box lacrosse court within that with, with a fair bit of space to spare.
Yes, that's correct. I guess I was comparing it to the twin arena building and, you know, you've got circulation of other rooms in there. But that's a fair assessment.
It's having the second floor, Michael, is certainly adds a lot more flexibility to the the use of the facility and, and future, you know, growth requirements and such, but it's a substantial amount of area in that second floor if it's needed.
There is, and it was also, and I didn't mention this in, in this presentation, but that's also where we were assuming some of the viewing areas would be for, for like the field house for a competition or an event. The running track might be temporarily closed off and temporary bleachers would be installed, looking down at the field house. So it, it would be, I think, servicing quite a few different needs for the building.
I'll tell you, I, I think it's encouraging what I've seen, you know, when I think about, because we've never, we've never, we've seen a reduced sized field house, but it's a little bit concerning that maybe you're going too small, you know, maybe I miss a boat and put something in that. But if we have that flexibility in that upper level to expand on another, you know, whatever, you name it, indoor soccer field or, you know, the the options are a lot more, you know, perceivable. But anyways, I, I'm encouraged with this because I, I don't know if the rest, and I kind of got the feeling, I, from the rest of council that it was, it was questionable whether we replace the old curling rank or not. And, and I know there's a lot of people think that it's, it's like new. It's not the type of structure that should deteriorate very rapidly anyways, but I think it's encouraging to think that we can, we can do this without replacing that curling ring because in, it's in, in the image of the community that there is nothing wrong with our curling ring. Don't spend $20,000 replacing that, you know. So I mean, I, I think there's some great, great consideration thoughts here with this concept, but it's just my thought. Counselor, help.
Yes, thank you, worship. Thanks, Michael, for the presentation. It was great. I guess the reality is, is that we, you know, we look at different budgetary numbers and we start thinking, you know, we want to be closer to, you know, $25 million, but, you know, unfortunately, $25 million doesn't really get us what we potentially hope for or our needs in our community might be. So I'm glad that we got this. In my opinion, it's a hybrid of what we've been kind of, the, the big grandest thing that we thought of at first just replacing some, some components. So it's great to have the comparables and I appreciate you guys' thorough report.
Yeah, well, thank you for that. And, and you know, when we first saw the number, we said, well, do we need construction phasing options on this? Because aligning a project with a budget is paramount. And when we didn't see the numbers coming in at 25 million, we instantly just thought, well, how, how can we further reduce this? We know the community needs a renewed aquatic center of some type. And it would be great to also provide the field house because it's new amenity, new value for the community. But, but that was the question we were asking ourselves. Does this need to be broken into two construction phases? We weren't really seeing a whole lot of options for further reducing the size. It was feeling like we were getting as efficient as possible on these two programs. But it does need to align with project budget and, and that is one of the recommendations for next step is, is, is for the town just to say, pick a budget that you feel, you feel good with, that the consultant team needs to ensure the design meets.
Any other questions? Like, I'm glad to see you've got some pickleball taken into consideration. They're claiming, I'm being told that ex, or retired mayors take up pickleball.
It's growing in popularity everywhere. It's not just retired mayors.
It is actually getting pretty popular. So our next step, Mr. CEO.
If council's comfortable to use this report for future planning, future conversation with next council, we'd ask council to consider making a motion to approve the installed multi-plex recreation and community center pre-designed.
Okay, is someone prepared to make that motion?
Your worship, I, I will make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Barkley. Any discussion?
Yeah, the question I have quite simply is, so we're just approving it as a report because we've had no chance to keep the ball, to look at the ways you feasibly finance it or anything else. We're just approving the report as, as given.
Correct, Councilor Bates, certainly recognizing councils, a lot of work has gone into this report, so I don't want to minimize that. You certainly put it to a really good place for our next council to, to review this information and, and of course administration supporting council and determine how this could proceed.
I think to CEO Becker, then it's important for us to give it, keep it, keep it alive, but it's, I think our next step has to be, okay, if we're gonna take on a $40 million project, how do we finance it? We've got to get more serious on, on availability of grants and fundraising and, you know, funding and that kind of thing before we can make any, future council can make any decisions. They've got to know what they've got to work with. So, but we can only talk about it so long till it comes down to the crunch for, okay, how do we pay for this thing? How do we do this?
And just to give council some comfort to your comments, Mr. Mayor, your worship, administration has been working on, on those pieces on financial condition, financing. What do we need to do to make a, the venture payments? So yeah, that work has started, turning me to hear from new council on, on confirming this is a priority. And then advance our corporate tools to help with that conversation with council once that process has started.
Okay, does everybody understand the motion then? I'll ask the question and all in favor of the motion. Carrie, thank you.
Just in closing, your worship, I don't want to, if I take the mic here, but I just wanted to commend council for, for your efforts, a lot of hours you put in for this, every two years really of your time. And of course, the community, there's lots of engagement, pre reports, developments, of course, staff as well, but certainly it's been a really good experience, work with H C M A and then partners with this, with this process.
I agree. Council's been very, very positive in consideration of a well-deserved community facility, I think, and it's, we'll be proud to have.
Before X, yeah, before exiting, I'll just echo Todd's remarks to say that it's been a delight working with administration and, and your worship and members of council on this project. It's really exciting to see how a project like this could have such a large impact in your community. And so if there's, you know, any way that we can help going forward, we would be more than happy to assist however we can.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
But do we need any more motions on that effect? Okay, thank you, Michael.
Have a great day. Thank you. Bye.
Bye. Any further discussion on that matter, or have we talked about it enough for now? No. It is. It is very exciting. Okay. Let's move on to operations. We have an R F D regarding solid waste collection contract. East 360 S.
Thank you. So we were approached a little while ago with, from E360 here with their expiration of their contract coming up in April. So back in 2019, we awarded the contract to Environmental 360 Solutions with a provision to extend the contract for two years. At the time, E360 was the only company that provided really pickup. Over the last couple of years, we have formed a strong working relationship, have gone through quite a process of learning and, and dealing with the residents. But we have felt that E360 has been very responsive in regards to either concerns or complaints from the residents. As I said, we did meet with them in regards to a request to extend the contract. Due to an increase in higher organic dumping fees, they proposed to decrease the garbage and recycling pickup fees, which would reduce the overall cost, overall increase. I did attach a detailed comparison. But in brief, the proposal would increase the overall cost by approximately $405 a year annually compared to 1,525 annually, if, if we weren't, if we were to just use the existing numbers from E360. We also did a comparison in regards to the second lowest bidder that provided us a submission in 2019. We did indicate that this still puts them under that bidder's rates from 2019, so financial impacts, obviously, in 2021, the solid waste contract amount was 688,824. This would increase it as stated by $405 for next year. So we are looking at council to approve the award of the solid waste collection contract through Environmental 360 Solutions for a two-year term extension to expire April 1st, 2024. I'll take any questions.
I'll move so that we can just proceed with the questions and I'll move that we proceed with the recommended action of the two-year extension.
Thank you, your worship. I just, a question through to Director Kennedy. So that 405 is annual for the two years, so it'd be a total of 810 increase over the two years on the total contract, $810. Thank you very much.
Worship through to Director Kennedy. We had a site visit to the organic location. That was last year, two years ago, but I know we spoke at the time about potentially something coming back to the town of Innisville as far as, Megan, you can refresh my memory, but you know, some composting, that kind of thing. Yeah, yeah.
Like that we could get compost back from Stickland Farms that people could come and pick up at the transportation or something?
Yeah, I haven't followed up with that.
So would that be separate from this? Like, that would be done with Stickland or?
That would be separate from this. Yeah, that would be through, through the solid waste providers.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? I'll ask the question then, all in favor of the motion. Carrie, thank you. Next item is the R F D regarding Reserve Two Generator.
Yeah, so I'm, over the last couple of months here, we have been working with that R F P with some local contractors in regards to engaging the supply and install of the new emergency generator at Res Two. Currently, the Res Two generator is a backup pump, a diesel pump that runs the pressure in the water distribution system when it falls in below a certain point. This pump was purchased in 1977. Parts have become very difficult to find. The new diesel generator pump or generator would replace the pump and run the two existing electric pumps in the event of a power failure or interruption. Included in the, in the project was an option to replace the motor control center or M C C panel, which was recommended as part of the assessment done due to age and condition. The request for quotes for the project closed on August 10th, three contractors submitted bids. Sterling Industries was 990 for 99,920. Colacut Energy was the higher bidder at 130,273. The bid evaluation was done by Tagish Engineering. Sterling did provide the The bit evaluation was done by Tagish Engineering. Sterling did provide the most comprehensive package. Compared to the other two bidders, therefore was respectfully recommended by Tagish to award to this contractor. As you see with the total project cost, including engineering contingency. Was two hundred and two thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars. The project value is over the budgeted amount of two hundred thousand dollars, but there is additional funds available in the utility reserve. With the reduction of the additional funds of reserve balance with for the after the project is completed to be two hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and fifteen. So it is a recommendation that council approves the reservoir to emergency generator to Sterling Industries. For the value of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty, this does include the M C C panel. To be funded from the utilities equipment reserve fund.
Okay. Summon prepared to make that motion.
Issue worship all moves that. We approved the award of the reservoir to emergency generator contract Sterling Industries Incorporated. For a hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars to be funded from the utilities equipment reserve fund.
Okay, any questions? Oh, comes for beats.
Yes, your worship, through to Director Kennedy, when have we ever had to run both electric pumps at the same time?
I believe that they just cycle right now and then the emergency pump pumps on. This is the way that it's programmed right now.
Yeah, the reason that I was asking, of course, was the capacity that we're trading. We're trading a backup to the pump to just being sure that the electric ones run, right? Whereas before you could have one. Electric and the diesel partially helping or whatever, if you needed the water flow. But if if one pump is all we need, then this works. Thank you.
Twice the capacity now if you had a power outage.
No, my point was if if either the electric motor or the pump that it's driving. Is the failure, your diesel pump was totally independent, whereas you're now going to have a generator that powers the two electrics. And if one of them was down and you, yeah.
The single public.
One has to be able to do the job. Thank you.
Your worship, just through to Council Harrison, if I was hearing right, I thought you. Said the word for hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and twenty instead of one sixty-seven.
Okay.
Wish I do have a question. What's this motor control center for us, non engineers and non mechanics?
Good question. No, it's just a panel that has, it houses all the. Electrical and also our SCADA components and computers. That fits inside, so existing panel right now is is located in in an area that's was subject to some water damage. So it is in fairly rough condition, so this would just replace that. The cost is quite high just because of all the electronics.
Okay, thank you.
One question, and I'll have this as a C E O, I guess, is the, when we. When you, we do this, we're taking funds from. That reserve account to pay for it, right?
It's your worship that reserves fund that was set up specifically for this type of purchase. Unless you're, Director Kennedy can outline other potential purchases from the reserve at this point, but. That's what that utilities equipment reserve was established for.
I don't, I don't want to. I'm trying to picture in my mind because I, I don't, hopefully don't, we aren't depleting our reserves to buy things. And will you, like if there's a surplus at the end of this year with the capital projects, which I'm thinking there, there will be. Will that be replaced by that surplus, that reserve spending?
I think. We have not established a reserves policy to outline exactly what amount goes in, but. When you achieve your surplus, whatever that balance is, you can allocate it to where you see fit. This was a budgeted project. Council did review this during your deliberation for the capital budget. It's not a new project. So all those pieces were evaluated at that time. If you feel comfortable, we could certainly. Go back to the capital plan to outline where are the purchases and priorities are are focused on.
The only reason I'm making that comment is that we're, we're looking at a serious future project here that. The last thing we want to start to do is reduce our. Our surpluses. And you know, because I've heard that comment more than once this year already that we're, we're spending our surplus, it's coming down. That's the last thing I think we want to do at this point.
Yeah, I think that's a good commentary, your worship. However, you know, the director indicated. During the budget deliberations and he's telling counts right now that this is a nineteen seventy-seven dollar. Nineteen seventy-seven year piece of equipment. It's, you know, it's almost my age. Which is pretty old. In respects, it is a need, it is a liability, we can certainly delay this project if council sees fit. But to administration, we're seeing this as an urgent purchase and replacement.
Yeah, no, it's just a compliment. Thanks. All right, any further discussion? I'll ask the question then, all in favor of the motion. Carrie, thank you. All right, moving on to community services road closure. Anyways.
Um, yes, we do have two citizens in attendance here for item seven point three. If council was interested.
For seven point three?
Yeah.
Okay, would you want to go ahead with that?
If that works for. They've been sitting patiently. All right, so we're looking at a land use by law amendment fourteen seventy dash A seventy-four. Looking for consideration of first reading and scheduling of a public hearing for this land use by law amendment. So the owners of lot six, plan eight five zero zero E T, Vic and Suzanne Paul. Have applied to add two discretionary uses to the highway commercial district for this property. Vanessa, if you want to roll to the next page, just so everybody knows what, or the third page, I guess it is, that shows the property. The requested uses to be added are contractor services major and manufacturing industries as discretionary uses on this parcel. So the requested uses are intended to accommodate a potential purchaser who would operate a small scale welding shop. That operation would be intended to involve mobile welding services. Where trucks leave the site to perform work at offsite locations. On-site repairs and alterations of trailers, vehicles and farm implements. On-site fabrication of structures and components for delivery to an assembly at offsite locations. And the outdoor storage of materials such as steel and pipe racks, trucks and trailers. So the report includes the bylaw definitions for each of those uses. So contractor services major, this definition really captures the sort of the trucks and. The offsite work that would go along with this use, where manufacturing industries more effectively reflects the welding component. So the proposed bylaw will give effect to the applicant's request and if. Approved, the two requested uses would apply solely to this parcel and not to other properties designated within the highway commercial district. The applicant's rationale for adding the two uses to enabling this use are summarized as follows. So the current zoning of this property as highway commercial, the property is one point nine two acres in size and the current zoning. While it does work for the front piece of the property, which is currently double D trailer sales operates on the front. About a third of the property. However, the back piece where the shop is located, does not fit well with the highway commercial uses for the following reasons. It's adjacent to the town's RV sewer dump and has odor during peak periods of use. And the operation of many of the permitted uses within the highway commercial district are not felt to be suitable. So just for an example of some of the listed uses within the highway commercial district. The permitted uses within the highway commercial district include drive-in business, financial services, health services, hotels, motels. Offices, personal services, restaurants, retail stores and sales and service outlets for automobiles. So I guess the point the applicant's making in in their statement is sort of that a lot of the permitted uses that are listed within the highway commercial zoning. When you do look at this site, maybe aren't things that would would fit, fit nicely on the space. So the uses to the northeast and west of lot six are a mix of commercial and industrial uses and zonings, so the properties. Directly east and west are both part of the highway commercial zoning. When you go across Lakewood Drive to Stewart Construction, you get into established industrial. Zoning there, residential uses to the south and southwest. There is a fifty-foot wide trail corridor directly south of the parcel between. Between the parcel and the beginning of Madison Park, and then there's the the lot that has the large telecommunications tower. To the south as well. So lot six was one of several properties that was changed from industrial to commercial zoning in two thousand and four. The area did begin as one of the community's industrial areas to take advantage of proximity to the rail and former highway fifty-four. Back in two thousand and four, with the consent of area landowners. There was a change to the municipal development plan and the land use by law designations to transition to commercial use of this area. Residential development to the south and southwest in Madison Park was beginning to get underway at that time as well. So the existing industrial uses in the area, however, do have non-conforming status and are allowed to continue. New uses were expected to begin to evolve to a more commercial nature. So by law of fourteen seventy, A seventy-four includes provisions that administration is suggesting to be considered. In response to the applicant's request, so if council is open to the change. Administration is requesting a couple of additions as well. So firstly, the highway commercial district does prohibit open storage yard in yards abutting a residential district. And in addition, the general regulations place limits on open storage yards in any minimum yard abutting a residential district. So this parcel doesn't directly abut a residential district, but due to the proximity to residential. We are suggesting that we clarify this through a special requirement for lot six. That would allow open storage for the two proposed uses, subject to sufficient screening. The screening could take the form of fencing and or landscaping. Second, a special provision is proposed to require additional landscaping for visual screening purposes. For the uses, regardless of whether or not open storage is occurring. So the intent of this provision is to benefit again the residential properties to the south and southwest. By breaking up or blocking the view of these industrial uses. So finally, as a discretionary use, when the development permit for this part property potentially comes forward. Days and days of the week and hours of operation of the two uses can be subject to limitations. If deemed necessary by the by the development authority. So. As with any changes to zoning within the land use by law, there's a requirement for a public hearing. And that notification is provided directly to all adjacent property owners as well as through our website. So at this time, administration is recommending that council. Grant first reading to by law fourteen seventy A seventy-four and schedule Tuesday, October twelfth for the public hearing.
Were you going to make a motion or I was going to bring you a point up?
You go, you go first, your worship.
Okay, the only point I had that constantly always. If we have the, give this first reading, I have the public hearing on October twelfth. It's not going to reach a council for a second reading until a new council is in place.
A council could consider following the public hearing on October twelfth, you could consider second and third reading.
On the certain.
Yeah, that's what we often do.
Okay. Yeah, okay, that's a regular council meeting going. Yeah, I just make sure because you can't. Yeah, you can, councils have to, you know, start from scratch, okay? All right, Council Hill.
Issue worship, I would perceive that council grants first reading of bylaws seven or fourteen seventy dash A seventy-four.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Counselor Bates.
I would, just a suggestion, I think I would be. Prepared as administration to. Make sure we're we're able to address potential noise more than even the visual of a covered storage. Just be prepared to discuss that, I would think. That's, that's, that's my feeling.
Just to add to that, so that is one, you know, difference between industrial and commercial properties as well. So industrial properties are. Exempt from from some of our noise bylaws. Where commercial properties, there are some higher standards for for noise. But as Council Bates mentioned, yes, the development authority at the time of the permit can specify times if they so choose. For when, when certain activities can take place.
Counselor Harrison.
Thank you, your worship, but just further to Counselor Bates's question on noise, that could be handled through screening and landscaping, could it not?
Can certainly be be helped through that, yeah.
Thank you.
Will there be any further input from M P C then after, once this is rezoned?
So if the, if the L U B amendment is successful. Then the applicant would be able to submit a development permit application that would come forward to to M P C.
M P C, so at that point, they can, good, good. All right, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, carried. And do you want a separate meeting air milk motion for the public hearing? Okay, would someone like to move that we give this?
Worship, I'd so moved that we said.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. I so moved that we set Tuesday, October the twelfth, twenty twenty-one. At three P M, a council chambers as the date, time and place for the public hearing on bylaw one four seven zero dash A seven four.
Okay. Discussion, all in favor of the motion. Carrie, thank you. Okay, do you want to then do which one next, seven, seven point one?
Okay, so we're looking to present road closure bylaw sixteen sixty-eight dash twenty twenty-one. That closes all of the lane within plan zero nine two two six two three for consideration of second and third readings. So this bylaw proposes to close all of the lane contained within the plan as shown on your screen. The green outlined area on the air photo below is the lane that is to be closed. It is located at the north, in the north part of Innisville, just north of fifty-ninth street, running between forty-eighth and forty-ninth avenue. Land on either side of this section of lane is now zoned, established industrial. As part of a rezoning that was completed earlier this year. Once closed through this process, this piece of land will become a fee simple titled parcel. This, the closure of this portion of lane is needed to facilitate road widening along the east side of lot twelve. Which is the the lot on the east side there in that image. For the future extension of forty-eighth avenue, following the closure of the lane, the newly titled land. Can potentially be consolidated with lot eleven and lot twelve as part of a land transfer with the. The common owner of lot eleven and lot twelve. So a road acquisition agreement will be registered on on the title. So the the road can be obtained at the time of construction when forty-eighth avenue. when Forty-Eighth Avenue is uh slated for extension. So the process to close this portion of public road allowance has included um a notice in the Alberton on April twenty-seventh and May fourth. Uh, notification of the adjacent landowners and utility companies, uh public hearing held on May tenth. Uh, consideration of input by council at the hearing, followed by council's decision to proceed uh with first reading. Um, the information package with all the comments received by the town is then was then forwarded to the Minister of Transportation in June. And then Alberta Transportation reviewed and approved uh with the minister signing off and being returned to the town at the tail end of August. So the final step in the approval process is for town council to consider second and third reading of the bylaw. Uh, once the bylaw has been passed, uh it can be submitted to land titles office. So if approved, the closed portion of the rate of the road uh may be consolidated with lots eleven and twelve uh in exchange for the future road widening, uh that land transfer would come back before council uh once the road acquisition agreement has been prepared and discussed uh with the property owner. So at this time, we're looking for consideration of second and third reading uh of this bylaw.
Counselor Barkley.
Thank you, your worship. I will uh move that we give second reading to bylaws eight sixteen sixty-eight twenty twenty-one.
Okay, thank you. Discussion. Customers.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. How do we capture the road widening somewhere down the road? Like, will that be a caveat on the?
Yeah, so we'll prepare a road widening or road acquisition agreement uh that will be registered on title of of the parcel. Um, so then when we do move forward with construction, uh that will be, that will be available.
Okay, thank.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you.
Your worship, I'll give third, uh move that we give third reading to bylaw sixteen sixty-eight twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Counselor Bates. All in favor of the motion? Carrie. Thank you. Seven point two land use amendment.
My page is all mixed up here. Okay, so um land use by law amendment fourteen seventy dash A seventy-three uh is to prevent is to present uh land use by law amendments for first reading uh at the recommendation of administration. So administration presented to council back in August, a series of amendments um that we would like to have council consider as a way to streamline some of the processes in our bylaw and improve some of the functionality. Um, some of these uh recommendations, I guess, have come directly from administration um from MPC as well as uh considerations of the provincial red tape reduction process. Um, so I'll give you just a high-level overview of the uh proposed amendments um as the bylaw itself is actually kind of hard to read and decipher what's going on in there. So um, the first one has to do with residential care. So the bylaw currently provides use definitions for properties used to provide formal care to individuals uh who, for various reasons, are unable to maintain their own homes. Uh, adult care housing is the current uh wording that we use and is a discretionary use in all residential land is land use districts excluding the narrow lot district and manufactured home districts. Uh, group home is another current term that we use, is a discretionary use within the R two and RT districts. Um, the proposed bylaw will amend to remove these two definitions, adult care, housing and group home, and will introduce three new uses of residential, of residential care, social care and assisted living. Um, so residential care means a de- development where physical, social or mental care is provided for four or more persons who live communally for periods exceeding six months and where at least one staff person is at the facility at all times when there is a resident within the facility. This would be added as a discretionary use to the R one A, B, C, uh, R two, R three and RT districts. Uh, so the big difference there is right now our adult care uh didn't, didn't set a number of residents. So basically, at this point, if it's care provided for less than four people, um, it would not be deemed a use different than just a regular um single detached uh use. So there wouldn't be permit requirement for those uses. Um, so then, social care is the next definition, and it means development providing temporary living accommodations to to those receiving supervisory medical or other care on a short-term basis. Um, so this would be added as a discretionary use within the R two, three and RT districts. And this definition would include facilities uh such as hospit- hospices, institutional foster homes and shelters. Uh, the final addition would be assisted living means a development that provides limited health care to residents from an onsite healthcare provider that contains either individual dwelling units or private rooms or combination thereof that includes a communal dining and social space for the exclusive use of the residents and may include accessory manager and our visitor suites and administration office added as a discretionary use in the R two, R three and RT districts. Um, the next big change was to do with mobile commercial sales. So the bylaw is being amended to not require a permit through the land use by law uh for mobile commercial sales such as food trucks, um, table corn, those types of uses. Um, the current process is quite slow and limits approvals to only commercial lots, which has kind of limited us or forced us to kind of go around our own rules for our public spaces. Um, essentially, the the business licensing process will be the the tool we utilize for these temporary uses. Um, next one is home occupation ones. So currently, home occupation class ones are permitted use in most residential districts. Home mock ones are defined as essentially an office-only operation that generates no client traffic, additional employees or external storage. Um, has, as COVID nineteen has demonstrated, many people are working from home as employees of other businesses. Um, so really, it's a similar use whether you're being told to work from home, working for someone else as opposed to operating your own sort of office-only building business. Um, so the bylaw change would make these operations not require a permit. Um, the requirement for a development permit for a home mock one will be removed. Um, and this would represent a reduction in red tape and a promotion of small business ventures. So the next one is the conversion of the direct control district A three. Um, so the conversion of this district to the RT district. Uh, this district is very, or this area is very similar in nature to the RT area. Uh, many permits have had to go through the MPC process for minor changes in occupancy, um adding significant time and frustration for applicants. Um, the RT zoning provides a similar range of uses um with more falling within the permitted use uh listing. Um, the next one is uh secondary suites. So this is one we haven't had as much discussion on. Um, but the current definition limits secondary suites to detached dwellings only. Um, administration is proposing to change um to provide the potential that suites could be developed in side-by-side duplexes um in certain districts, um primarily the RT, R three and R two, so districts that already do contemplate um duplexes and fourplexes. Um, we've run into a few situations where we have existing suites in duplexes. And even if they are able to upgrade the suites to meet building code, we can't approve them through our land use bylaw, so it kind of leaves these people in the option to basically just try to avoid us. So hoping that this gives a bit of an opportunity to um get those uh those properties inspected and up to code um and gives us a bit more flexibility. So um, you will see in the actual text of the bylaw where it may read secondary suite or it may read secondary suite in a detached dwelling only. So in those areas, you wouldn't, it wouldn't work in a duplex. It could only be in a, in a single-family home. Um, so then, and then just a collection of a few other updates, some clarification to signs. Um, the height of signs in downtown, flag signs. Um, clarification of landscaping provisions. Um, the elimination of minimum floor area requirements within our residential districts. So we, right now, within the R one B, you have to have a twelve-hundred-square-foot house or there's, those are specified. Um, and we have had um people coming forward looking to build smaller homes in some of those those areas. Um, so that is proposed to be be removed as well. So at this time, again, we're looking for first reading and then uh scheduling of the public hearing for that October, the twelfth uh date. Um, notice of the bylaw will be posted on the website and in the Town Voice as well. Those direct control uh A three properties will all receive direct uh mail notification.
Okay, uh, someone prepared to make a motion to that effect. This first reading.
Your worship, I would uh grant first reading of bylaw fourteen seventy dash A seventy-three.
Thank you. Counselor Hill, discussion. Counselor Bates.
So, um, I do have a question, I guess, through to Director Jenkins for the uh initiate, in short form, what's the difference between having to have a uh development permit versus not? Because I see that one reference here to this cuts the red tape of having to have a development permit.
So for the home mock ones or the mobile, so?
I'm referring to more to the uh residential uh care.
So I guess for right now, if similar to the appeal hearing that came forward earlier this year, um, in that situation, that use with the two residents that were going into that home, that use would not require a development permit under the um, under the uh proposal that we're putting with these definitions. Um, so it would only be once that house has four or more residents that it's deemed that that's a use that has more impact than a standard single-family uh development and would then have to go through a development permit uh process.
Well, the reason I'm asking is, I am recently hearing of concerns of the one that that is functioning and um I think the primary concern that keeps coming back to me is that, is that there's now a business in the middle of a residential area and that, you know, it was, it was a residence, it's now a business.
But is it functioning as a business? It, I guess, that's, that's the question. It's functioning in terms of the impacts on the neighborhood? Is there's individuals that live there and then a a care person that that comes and goes, correct?
Well, it is a business, but it is also disturbing some of them, so.
Due to the the commercial nature of the use or just?
Well, it's due to the use. In this, in this case, it's because of care of of individuals as opposed to the care of a resident in that, in, you know, it's, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a business that can have more concentrated uh use than than if it was just uh caring for a resident, a specific resident in that business, in that house, sorry. It's now a business and um yeah, I I'm just telling you, I'm hearing concerns about it and it bothers me a little bit to think that we might actually have a less red tape, let's say, to, to that particular uh business going into a a fully residential area.
I guess there's no limitation on, you know, we have businesses that own residential properties throughout the town, um, and that the land use bylaws intended to regulate the impacts of the uses. Um, so if they, that, I guess, in my understanding, I don't live up the street, but that there are one or two residents that live there and there is care provided to them no differently than if, if you had someone coming in and out of your home to to provide care, I guess.
Yeah, the difference being that that it switched from a residence to a business. That's the concern I'm hearing as a counselor. Um, I'm not, yeah. Uh, I'm not saying we should not do the bylaw because of that. I'm just expressing with you. And um thinking that you'll probably, I would think you're probably gonna hear some of that at the public hearing. Thank you.
Counselor Barkley.
Yeah, your worship, through to Director Jenkins, I would concur with Counselor Bates and I've had some feedback myself that things are maybe not going the way that we were told they were going to go with MPC and that's disappointing. I guess, so I I'm a little reluctant in this part to reduce red tape and maybe it's, you know, maybe some protection for the town and for people to make these decisions that we remove this part from from this change. I I don't know, but um.
Can I ask again what you're hearing in terms of what the, the impacts or how the operation isn't?
Some disturbance like noise, that's interfering with other people in in the area and enjoying their property.
That's for, uh, your worship, uh, Megan's question, is there opportunity to mitigate some of those concerns? Uh, certainly, we could become involved administratively, uh, even communicate onto the corporation. Um, we have not heard from citizens directly, but um if council's hearing that, certainly pass those individuals off and we can certainly mitigate uh um any inappropriate um interactions within the residential area.
Yeah, so it's, it's been a fairly recent bit of information to me and and I'm trying to get that direction. But again, I just wanted to reflect back that the chief concern is is accepting a residence as being a residence. And so if, yeah, if that resident needs care, that's different than bringing in a business. You know, they're there, they're the current resident owner. Um, it's not likely to be multiples. At the same time, it's usually going to be the one resident that needs their care in their own home. And uh, the fact that it's become a business is is uh grading on some of the people and visual and noise are the complaints that I'm hearing.
I think uh in defense of uh the CEO Becker's uh comment though, unless uh, like, we, the town has granted them permission to do this. If they're not pertaining, you know, complying with, maybe, you know, the conditions that were stated, we have to at least give administration the opportunity to to check into it and follow it up.
Yeah, I'm not saying that in any way, shape or form. Otherwise, I'd be even volunteered to help be the uh communication link to administration. I still have got nothing concrete to communicate other than hearsay.
Okay.
And as soon as I can get something concrete, I will.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just throwing it out there as a caution that um if you take any residential area in the town that's purely residential, it's not a transition. It's it's purely residential and and you have a business in it. Um, that is a market change to the use and that's viewed that way by the residents. And and I'm not sure we want to streamline that any more than it already was. That's, that's.
Okay, uh, Megan, these, these kind of uh facilities uh have been permitted in town and other areas such as, you know, middle, midway houses and homes and stuff for younger people.
Yeah, we have adult care housing. There are, there's probably six or eight of them at least um throughout. And the way um, if it was a social housing act, it is sort of, once it's four or more, then then they're involved in the licensing of those facilities. Um, and that's, yeah, where you, we have quite a few where the, you know, there's four, five, six. Um, typically adults with developmental disabilities that live in a home and they're licensed through that. This particular example that brought this one to light, they're below that four, so they don't fall under those provincial licensing requirements. It's essentially a a service that families can utilize this company when they're unable to to care for their family members themselves without putting them into an institutional situation.
I think we can thank the provincial government when they downloaded all these situations of, you know, handicap people that were to merge them into the communities and then closing down the facilities like Mitchener Center in Red Deer. You know, there were some concerns about it, invented it, but I think that's basically, this is just an example of the down, what can happen and emerging these people that are challenged into established communities, but I don't know what it doesn't make sense to put them in a commercial or industrial area either.
And we do need to be mindful that the the MGA itself was actually amended. That legislation allowed a land use bylaw, it cannot prohibit the regulation of a residential user of a parcel of land. So if if someone is using it as a residence, we're unable to say, sorry, you four adults can't live together in a Golden Girls setting or these certain people that might have a certain challenge or a certain lifestyle or however they want to live that that a land use bylaw does not have the ability to regulate residential users as a land use.
And your worship, I just don't want people or anybody here misconstruing what I'm saying, it's not that I'm against this or, you know, I think it's wonderful that we see people being integrated into our communities and being included, but I guess I'm a little bit like Counselor Bates, I'm not sure we want to streamline the process because I I think it's it's good to have dialogue and have questions asked to maybe providers that are coming into the community, I I know the the one that we're referring to was kind of a surprise, it was kind of getting done without any permit and and stuff, so. No, I that that concerns me a little bit, I guess, that, you know, they could be popping up everywhere and we don't know what it is or where, at least now, we've had an opportunity to hear from the provider. We know what we were told at MPC and maybe hearsay or some feedback we've got is that maybe that's not being followed the way we were told it was going to be.
For the discussion, yes, your worship, so I guess my question too, you know, we talk about reducing the red tape and whatever it may be, but whether this residency was, you know, no matter who was occupying it, whether there's a development permit or not, and there is still the to uphold the bylaw of noise and by law of of, you know, respecting others properties and whatever else, so I still think that there's, whether there's a bylaw or or permit, whether there's a development permit needed or not, if there is breach of of noise or any other concern, I still think there are ways of mitigating those concerns whether there's a development permit or not, so that's that's just another avenue that I think needs to be remembered as well. Your worship, if I may, kind of sensing counsel like a little bit more conversation regarding this part of the report, if so, just communicate that, you can certainly make adjustments to what Megan is reporting to you, like a first in direction, but if you wish this component of that report to be brought out of it for further conversation, make sure you understand exactly what this is and what you you really want, you have a real life example as a reference, you know, that's fair, just just ask for what you want.
And I think it's important too to get feedback on on the the stakeholders that are involved here and their opinion, if they can be, if we can, if you can approach them, concerns about issues with the neighbors and such and can, you know.
I don't want to confuse the past with what's being presented to us here, it's just a heads up that that I was trying to raise. I don't want to combine the two, that that other one will have to be dealt with, it's it's approved, it's there.
Your worship, so we're at first reading, haven't voted on it yet, so you need a motion to take out that section regarding.
Or I think that'd be fair, because Harrison, I just we understand all the counsel where you're at and certainly want Megan's feedback on what that goes to, what you're presenting. Or we take it all back with your direction, but we can certainly, if council is under the impression that part of this report should be deferred to for more detailed conversation, you can certainly make that through 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 a resolution.
Just for clarification, then, I haven't had any complaints on, and now we're getting into the weeds on another residence, but on that residence, but I'm with his worship there that we have, we have enforcement, don't we have a noise bylaw? And if it's that that loud, why hasn't somebody complained? I know it's sort of a, you know, the counselor will fix it, but we've all been instructed and we know the process that we we should be coming through administration, so when I get those type of complaints, the first thing that I suggest to the resident is that have you called administration and lodged that complaint? And if they have, and if there's not follow up, and I can say that every complaint that I've passed along to administration, there has been follow up. And it's, there's always a, maybe not a satisfactory resolution, but there's been some kind of some kind of follow up, so, you know, I I see it as our duty as council council people to to start that, and then if we don't get resolution at the administration, then I think it's maybe time councilman get involved and that's a discussion between us and and administration. Thank you.
Counselor Harrison, that's the way I've operated for seven and a half years and this is, yeah, it's wrong that we're tying, I was just giving a heads up that that one would, it tells me it might intuitively that I'm not sure we want to streamline it in some, in some cases, that the fact that we have a problem somewhere shouldn't directly tie to this bylaw. We'll take care of that separately.
Well, I just heard your worship from CEO Becker that there could be a resolution to take that section out, so I, if you're prepared to make that motion, we can certainly vote on it.
Your worship, so my input on that would be that that there is with granting this bylaw first reading, we would allow that the people of the public for the public hearing to bring forward any concerns of things that either have worked or have not worked in the past and and potentially yeah, bring that to light and and I think that it would, yeah, I think that I would be comfortable with, you know, letting it do its sole purpose of the public hearing is hearing from the public, so I personally think it would be to advance this to this process would be, I would be comfortable with keeping my motion and advancing it to a public hearing. That's where I stand, that's where I stand, your worship.
Just an opinion, but I do believe that could even become more complex in our discussion here today. I think some of the public would come and and absolutely drag that situation into the discussion.
Well, that's, that's what we're trying to get him to do is reach out tell us.
Your worship, I would, I like the the other points, two through six, I believe it was, but I I would personally like to see number one left out of this discussion or we could have further discussion about that.
I can just add that, yeah, we can, we could take that section and and put it in a standalone bylaw on its own. If there is anticipation that it could be contentious, it might be one that would be better suited to a public hearing date that isn't right before your election, so if we do have to go from the public hearing and not grant those readings, if there's some adjustments that need to be made, that perhaps it should get bumped back, so that's that's certainly something we can take those sections out of out of this bylaw.
And your worship through to Director Jenkins, it's more about, I guess, in my mind, whether like Counselor Bates, whether I I really want to streamline this process and yes, granted, I probably a few months ago, I I was thinking, yes, but I think some further thought and feedback that maybe this part should not be streamlined, we're reducing red tape and all these other areas, which is wonderful and as much as we can do that, great, but I'm just not comfortable at this point in time with that first part.
And yeah, we'll perhaps get some legal advice too with the MGA changes as to how those differentiations with residential users, to what degree we can differentiate.
Well, we have a choice to amend this motion now.
Yeah, your worship, I I will amend my motion, I I don't want to force feed or or push a topic that doesn't need to be forced, it should have its fair time and and administration have their time to conduct themselves as according, so I would definitely amend my motion that we would exclude number one and proceed with the rest of the red tape initiatives.
Your worship, just one more thing, I I think it it's worthwhile, it's not that we're saying, or I'm saying that we don't want this type of you know, approved, it's just that keep potentially keep the process that's in place now where it comes through MPC. It's it's not that we're saying, oh, let's not do this anymore, we can't have these in our neighborhoods, that's that's not what this conversation is about in my mind at all.
Okay, well, we have a
And I would even add that that maybe maybe this one will go that way as well, but then at least we aren't tying it to what could be an outside interference right now with the current situation, I think it's, I think it's wise to to proceed with the amended motion.
Okay. Is any further discussion, if not? I guess we vote on the amendment initially. So I would call for the question and those in favor of the amendment to the motion as stated. Carrie. Now, back to the original motion. And we have the original motion would be excluding number one, is that correct?
Correct, you could say reference to adult care housing and group homes are relevant to, yeah.
Then I'll ask that those in favor of that motion. On favor, Carrie, okay.
Do we include the public hearing in your first motion?
Yeah, well, I'm assuming meant it.
Your worship, I did not state that in my first motion, but it could be all inclusive if that was. I'll make the motion that council said the public hearing of Tuesday, October twelfth two thousand twenty one at three P M, the council chambers.
In reference to the original motion excluding number one, right?
That is correct, your worship.
All in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. All right. What do we got left here, Megan?
I think I'm good for a minute.
Hey. All right. Let's move on to correspondence. Any questions or comments from correspondence? I'm still all the letters we get regards to the RCMP and and funding and billing and retroactive half millions of dollars. Nobody's made any final decision yet, we just keep getting correspondence that beats around the bush. Have you got any more, CEO Becker, have you heard anything or?
No, your worship, I would agree, we're getting closer to the ultimate bad news, but they're certainly leaning towards those invoices coming in in the near future. Regarding RCMP, that is.
Yeah.
Your worship through to Director Vickers, and maybe this is too much of on the spot question, but with respect to the Cape letter that came and the increases that are coming, do you know offhand what our fees are to keep? They're up around three thousand dollars per day.
I believe they're around eight thousand right now. I can double check.
The the new invoice or what we paid previously.
That's what we paid previously.
From what I'm seeing, consequently, Antarek has sixty cents per capita, right, currently. So that's basically forty eight, forty two.
I could pull an invoice and bring it in the future.
Yeah, I think it's around that forty two to forty five ish, somewhere in there.
Waste Reduction Week, is there proclamation requirement there?
Yes, sir, it's in the package there for the first third week of October.
Okay. Do we want to make a motion to recognize Waste Reduction Week in Canada?
Your worship, I would make that motion.
Great. All right. Everybody understand that one? Okay, all in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. Any other questions on this correspondence? Not with the, except a motion to accept these for information.
Let's move, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Harrison. All in favor of the motion, carried, thank you. Zip around the table, counsel, counselor, hell.
Yes, your worship, yeah, nothing too terribly much to add, and unfortunately, I I had got a little rained out, I did partake and see some of the car show, just a little bit, which was good, it seemed like it was rain or shine, a lot of people passionate about their the rides, which is great to see. But on a little more of a serious note, I I did want to, I did provide a some correspondence to our CEO stating that all the pending or the 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 conclusion of the court case for myself has was concluded and there is a letter that was provided to all all council members stating that the charges were withdrawn as of August ninth and through the Sage Analytics Code of Conduct Review. It was recommended that I be removed from my committees at that time until the conclusion of the court case. Now that that it has been concluded and the charges were withdrawn and there's no longer any pending charges, I I am seeking that council reinstatement to me, to my committees that I was previously on prior to the Sage Analytics Code of Conduct Review. So that was something that just want to make sure that was clear and concise.
Oh, how would you like to deal with that?
Thank you, worship, confirming that Councilor Hill did provide a letter from from legal counsel regarding that is, terms have been dropped as of August the ninth, I did not provide a letter within your correspondence due to to some other references.
within your correspondence due to, to some other references specifically to Counselor Hill personally. Certainly would retain the letter on file. If you wanted to see it, certainly you'd be pretty understanding it as a foible documents, but it will be retained on file. Followed by an email request as what you see before you. If counsel would entertain Counselor Hill's request, it'd be through resolution. And if you do, do so, then ask or tell us when you'd like to proceed through those committee appointments. Understanding we have basically a month left within your term.
All right. Is anybody interested in making motion that we consider the reinstatement of Counselor Hill committee duties? Is the mayor allowed to make a motion?
Correct.
Any discussion?
I guess the only question I have is if you could just get a some kind of a little summary of which committees changed and how much. I don't believe I was on any of the primary responsibilities, just to maybe a backup or two. Call. The only primary that changed for me was when former counsel, Counselor Carrot left.
I just, just a matter of going back and looking, checking the history.
So your worship, maybe you just think of the wording of the motion to help with this is there's two things. One, the council considered their reinstatement, the revoking of the previous restrictions you placed on Counselor Hill. So that'd be the motion. The other one would be to actually appoint him to committees that you determine. So saying that a little bit more clearly, I'd suggest you, your worship, to motion and read for counsel to revoke the previous restrictions based on Counselor Hill as a result of the Code of Conduct Investigation, whatever the numbers were. And basically, yeah. And then if you want to do today, we can pull up committees to go through that process.
Yeah, I, I would think you'd probably, if, if there's a chance you can come up with it today, we can talk about it later. You want to do it now? Pardon me?
CEO suggested the, the first motion just being
Sorry, your worship. I was just wanting to make sure that it's, it's, it's follows the expectations. And obviously, prior to a vote that I would probably appropriately step out of the room for that vote.
Like it would be appropriate.
I think would be appropriate.
Just wanted, just before anyone's votes or anything, I just wanted to make sure that we, we stopped and paused for that. So I'll remove myself from this.
Okay, thank you.
Your worship, just so that I'm clear, that, that motion's on, on the floor.
That's correct.
Okay, it's on, so we can have a discussion around it. I guess what my concern is, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, well, we could have discussed it with Counselor Hill in here, but the, what my concern is, is it is the timing of it. We have a month before, a month and a little bit before we establish new committees or new representation on committees. And I really don't know what kind of meetings we're going to have over the next month at, at the committee level. And, you know, over the past little while, these committees, some of these committees have been thrown into a bit of a a turmoil here with changing members and getting members up to speed or council members up to speed. So that's my concern. I, I certainly don't have an issue about the reinstatement, but it's, it, it's, it's the timing of it. And the reinstatement is, is something that we had discussed when he went through the Code of Conduct. And I believe we all agreed that, you know, if he was cleared, then, you know, he could be reinstated. It's just the timing of it. You know, we're five weeks away from an election. What, October twenty-seventh, we'll be sitting down to new council will be sitting down to talk about committees and, and structures at the organizational meeting. So is it? Are we just going to throw more turmoil and chaos into what we've got going for the next five or six weeks? That would be my comment. Thank you, your worship.
All right.
Your worship, I would concur with that. I, I think we've been through a lot of turmoil on this council the last four years and, you know, committees are affected, the community is affected by that. And, and, you know, we, I, I don't even see any meetings coming up on the upcoming events other than what we heard from you, CEO Becker, with respect to the police committee, but that's for all of council. So I, I just think we're kind of doing this. It's almost like an administration task without really anything coming out of it. And you now have a person that hasn't sat on the committee for several months and now they come in at the very end. I, I would rather see us just leave it. And I, I don't mean that disrespectfully, but just leave it. Let's carry on, finish the, the, this term up another three weeks to go basically, and then carry on from there.
Any other comments?
Well, I guess I'm having a little difficulty with the, yeah, I don't think there's I don't see any many committee meetings happening. But on the principle of reinstatement, as far as yeah, that was kind of spelled out before. I'm not against, I'm certainly not against the specific motion that the mayor put forward. That, that, yeah, because it specifically said, once, once the charges were cleared that he would be reinstated. So I think the mayor's motion was to reinstate him. And then as to how we figure out which meeting starts when that may, that, that being a separate issue, I would support the motion as the current motion.
I think it's for your comments, counsel, to really get those words correct. I think the mayor you know, reinstated, but I don't know if it really conclude. I want to make sure we hear specifically what, what those words would be. Again, from administrative perspective, here are two things. So you can, you know, you can talk about appointments that it is appointed to this committee, this committee, this committee, that'd be an end result, but the initial motion I'd recommend would be motion to repeal the restrictions placed on Counselor Hill as a result of the Code of Conduct Investigation. What's the number of, whatever that number was, I can't remember that number. But so basically you're appealing those restrictions that you applied to Counselor Hill as a result of the Code of Conduct and as a result of his criminal code charges. And then you can decide if you wish to proceed further with the appointment to actual committees.
Well, I support the motion as worded in that fashion for sure.
I don't want to put words in your mouth.
I just, I know, I'll speak for the motion in that regard, that I just think that he's lived out his his, I guess, situation and done it properly. And we did say to him that he would be reinstated if he was found clear of all charges. He has been. And unfortunately, there's an election coming up, but and, and I'm sure in his mind, he's, he wants to be cleared and I think it's our responsibility if we have no serious reason not to, and we should follow up on that agreement. Okay. There's four of us here. I guess I'll ask the question and those in favor of the motion. On paper, thank you, everybody. And we will spend some time reviewing his, his committees. Right now, there's some difficult times and maybe it's not a good time to change committee representatives with only a month left in our terms, which I totally understand. And I'm sure Counselor Hill will too, that well, just for the sake of getting on a committee for one month. Let's, you know, let's work, work together on this. Okay. I'm sure you'll understand that. But at least we'll appeal to them on that regard. Okay. Do you want to maybe ask if, Ken, do you mind? Okay, did you have anything else to report, Counselor Hill?
No, your worship, I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bates.
Okay, so last week I had MPC, the special council meeting with the IDP with Red Deer County. Had an enjoyable day of rotary golf. I also attended the candidate information session. I did not attend the federal forum. It's a sad reflection. I think that that it was canceled. Sad reflection somewhat on our town. And this week I have both the executive and the general Red Deer River Municipal User Group meetings on Thursday. I think that's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Your worship by the MPC last week and attended the joint Red Deer County meeting, IDP, and of course, a candidate's information session. And I did attend the federal candidates forum. And it was a terrible reflection on our community without question.
I thank you, your worship. I also attended the IDP public hearing. And good work to Megan and her, her staff for bringing all that together. That was great. Also, the candidate's orientation. I did get a about forty-five minutes in between rain showers at the car show. So like I agree with Counselor Hill, that those guys really take a lot of pride in in their vehicles. I also attended our inaugural age friendly community committee meeting on September the eighth. And I'll tell you, I was very impressed with, you know, the quality of committee members. And I really think this committee is, is going to be a dynamite committee. We spent two hours, we sort of a meet and greet with committee members, but we had a presentation from Rob, and correct me if I get this wrong, Megan, but me, Yuro Shiro from Lethbridge, and he looks after their age friendly group in, in Lethbridge there. I believe he's a counselor, isn't he? Yeah, he sits on city council or on city council. And he gave us about forty-five minutes of sort of the ups and downs of what we might expect as we embark on this journey and some of the, you know, the pitfalls that they ran into his community when they were putting it together. So it was a good initial presentation. He shared a number or, or a few of the materials that they've used in their formation of their committee. So they were sent out last week and I believe all the committees members are reviewing them. We elected a chair. It's sort of a funny, a funny chair. It's a co-chair. And it's due to timing requirements. It's Brent Jackson and the lady that runs home care. Yeah, I, I didn't catch her name, but yeah, both are very busy individuals and they, they both felt that they couldn't give a hundred percent to the meetings, like be able to make them. But one of them, they should be able to. So I think there's going to be a partnership there on, on sharing the meetings. Our next steps were, we're, we're looking at a community action planning Health Canada grant. And we're all thinking about an age friendly project. And our next meeting, we have two meetings before Christmas. Well, one before the election and it could be a new council person on that committee after October eighteenth. So yeah, I think that, that was about it. Like I say, that's, I think it's going to be a pretty dynamite committee. The, the people that were around the table, and I do have their names, if you're interested. It was Diane, Ron King, Brent Jackson, the home care rep, Doris and Lucy. And they're all really keen and motivated to get going here. So we're going to give administration, I think some work to do. So just another task for Megan and her crew, Sandy and Karen. So I've said enough. I think that's, thank you very much, your worship.
Okay, thank you.
Your worship, I have a question for Counselor Harrison. With respect to the age friendly, and I didn't serve previously when they had that discussion. Does that include engaging with some of the younger people as well? Or is it just slanted towards senior age friendly?
I know it does. It's not directed totally at Innisfail seniors. Age friendly means we have from youth right up. And we talked about that at, at the meeting there and we can't lose sight of that. The younger generation, you know, the forty-five, thirty, it's all inclusive. So yeah, so, yeah, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Harrison. I too enjoyed the open house we had with County of Red Deer on our friend Jerry, IDP. And I think it was a good productive meeting, some interesting conversation with people. And I think it went quite well. The Water Commission situation, I think I pointed out at previous, at a previous meetings that there were still some outstanding funds coming from the provincial government. And there was all there was a three, three point four million dollar shortfall in, in the construction. And the province came back with this letter last week saying that they would support that that, but needs some time. So anyways, they, they've got that ironed out, which made the Water Commission quite quite happy about to affect their cash flow. So anyways, that was good news. There will be more to come on that more official. Don't think I have anything else. Steven, have you got anything going on projects or?
Currently, just Thirty-Seven Street is still underway. The Ball Diamond seven upgrade is, is near completion. I have a meeting with Alan this week to find out, find out if we're going to be moving ahead with the fence or not this year. That might get carried over next. And then just waiting on Apollo to get going on fiftieth again. So they've been definitely delayed quite a while there. So other than that, yeah, that's it.
Um, just that the survey, the phone calls have been completed. We got just over two hundred and fifty survey applicants, I guess. They were about ranged about twenty-four minutes long. So the comment was that Innisfellians really like to chat. So but now I suppose I'll be working on the document and then we'll be bringing it in the future.
Um, just an update. So the pool reopened today after its two-week shutdown. There was a little delay on the hot tub, but it should be open tomorrow. Tomorrow afternoon is the final market on Main and Devon Cooper will be performing from our corner lot. Skating starts in the arena on Friday. And yeah, and there's also plans for next Friday. There's Hillside Vibes is a concert that's going to take place down at Centennial Park on the evening of the twenty-fourth. So.
Ken, I think it's cool. And in the audience here, are any potential candidates there to? I am just, I'm, I'm so pleased to see that we've, you know, enough, some more people came on board because when it was sitting there was, you know, that we're going to end up acclamation here. And then boom, we got some good candidates. So welcome. Good luck. Any comments? You see where you can straighten things out a little bit here. Okay, anyways, Vanessa, you got anything? No.
I do, your worship. I did have a meeting with. Lady named Alicia Fox. I know you had a little bit of engagement, just inside bar conversation. She is the. She works for the Rural Health Professionals Action Plans or our PAP. You've heard of our PAP. She's new to the community. She's looking to have a chat with council. So I'm just posing, do you want to meet with this formally or informally? Certainly, you know, you could dial in just. In a quick coffee, if you like, or if you want to bring her to the chambers or defer, not not do that, but certainly she's quite engaging. And looking to learn more of the community and want to have a chat with council. So I just put it to you how you wish to. To to meet with Alicia. And if you do.
Your worship, I would like Alicia to come formally and do a presentation to us.
Should we suggest she do two? Like depending on what she does, the first one she may need to do two.
You likely Counselor base due to the time, but if if you'd like to speak to her, certainly just give me the nod and I'll. Ask her when she's available for either an A and P meeting or a council meeting.
Good.
Okay. Make that happen.
All right. Anybody out there in? Cyberland. Okay. Well, I guess. We're done in like. Session, upcoming events. And. I guess next motion would be go in camera. I'd like to move.
I I will move, we go in camera.
Thank you, Counselor Barkley. Can we take about a five-minute break? Please. Thanks for coming.